To the Town and Norfolk Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October twenty nine, two thousand and twenty four, seven P M. Uh, this is a special meeting. Uh, it's out of our normal cadence, our normal uh by week or once a month cadence. It is a Zoom only virtual meeting, uh, so I will. Go through with the in accordance to the governor's order to spending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter thirty, section twenty relating to the two thousand and twenty Novell Corner rise outbreak, emergency outbreak. The October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four, seven P M. Public meeting for the Norfolk Planning Board. Shall be physically close to the public to avoid group congregation. I don't know why that's in there, but it is on the agenda. Um, anyway, this meeting is, uh, it will be recorded. It is being, um. Uh, like I said, virtual meeting only on Zoom. And all the meeting information is provided on the town's website and you can, and it's been live streamed on N C T V. For live enjoyment and future rebroadcasts. Um, so meeting is open. We will, uh, do a roll call attendance. Uh, so let's do Eric Diamond.
Here.
Melissa Mayo.
Here.
Chris Monfort.
Here, present.
Gary Sullivan.
Here.
And then we do have our town planner. I see Richard McCarthy and our administrative assistant, Bessie Fajol. So. And myself, I'm here, Chad Peck. So, all right, uh, it's, we do have a pretty, like I said, this is a special, special meeting. It's out of our normal cadence. It's a special meeting, really just for a couple of topics. One, uh, we will talk about, uh, the items that we're preparing for the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four special town meeting. And also to, um, appoint our associate, our new associate member to the planning board. Um, and then any updates that Rich might have. And that's it. It's a pretty, pretty light agenda, so we'll go ahead and get started. So prep for the town meeting. It's first on the agenda. Uh, I know Chris has got some slides for us to review. Uh, did we want to just go basically in order probably of the warrant? Um, the, the first one is the big heavy lift. That's the. Uh, C six zoning article. I think it's, it's, um. It's Warren Article number five on the, on the warrant, right, Rich? Yeah.
Yes.
So it's C six vote zoning, uh, changes. Um, so Chris, I know you were working on some slides. You sent those out to the, to the board earlier today so that we could review, uh. Rich, do you want to throw those on the screen?
Hmm, actually, um. Well, uh, we'll like, we'll have Chris, uh, drive.
Okay. Yeah, whatever's easiest. Yep.
Just, uh. Should be able to screen share now.
All right, can you see?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I can no longer see you, so bear with me. All right, so presentation, starting with, uh, like amazing graphic that we got from the master plan, um, talking about the C six zoning changes. Focusing on the location, um, it's a commercial zone currently situated on Route one A, Denham Street. It's bordering Walpole, um, it's known as the Southwood property, which does encompass the entire C six zone. No other properties are being affected by any of these proposed zoning changes. Um, the history of the site, obviously, this was the, you know, something for us to be proud of. It was the first cancer research hospital in the nation. The previous Southwood Hospital is currently abandoned, uh, there are environmental contaminants that have been confirmed on site. And it is currently zoned for hospital use. Um, it was purchased by G F I Partners in February, two thousand and twenty one. With the intent of redeveloping the site.
So, so Chris, can you go back to that? So. Do we, it's currently zoned and like deed restricted. I don't know if in, in this situation, we want to necessarily talk about the deed restrictions. Um, just because it doesn't, it doesn't only impact zoning, it's just zoning.
Right. Yeah, he does have it on another slide.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I, yeah, I have it at the end, um, so. I'll continue and then.
Yeah, and then, um, I don't know, one other thing that popped to my mind. Is, and, and maybe we don't want to address it, but. We could is that G F I Partners is not the first, not the first developer to come to the town or, or. Showed interest to in this. It's just G F I purchased it. They're probably.
I think there's, there's a lot of history that we can go into on the site, for sure. So I, I, I think the relevant history.
Yeah, I think for this, for the town meeting, this is enough. I just wanted to mention those two things. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so how we got here, right? G F I Partners is obviously partnering very closely with the town. We've done a lot of community outreach, um, either G F I Partners through the PIP Group or, um, in community sessions, um, definitely through the master planning. We've understood some of the intent of what it is that people want at that location. Um, and there's been a lot of focus on ensuring that we have a safe environment cleanup, environmental cleanup of this location. So.
I'll interrupt you real quick.
Please.
I look at maps all day and. North is confusing on this map. It's not where you think it is. And then if you go, oh, actually, there's a North Arrow. I didn't see that. If you go back a couple others, I was gonna say, it, it, the site doesn't look like the same what you showed in the zoning area.
Oh, because mine, mine's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to make it human readable because if I flip it, then it's upside down.
I got you. Yeah, no, I know what you're saying, Eric. It, it, they don't cook a lot.
It looked, it looks like you give me a swap or something different, but.
Yeah, I don't think most people are going to be comparing these images, to be honest with you.
Well, I, what COVID is, I, I do all day, so.
No, I hear you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are. I mean, what if you did flip this and had a North Arrow pointing down? I, that's weird too, but that's the way. I mean, I. I don't know.
I, I, I think it's, it's all right. It's. You're ready to answer the question if it looks, uh, funny. That's all.
Is that, is that better?
Yeah, I would just make sure you have a North Arrow on it.
All right, now.
The North Arrow matches the, the plan sheet.
Okay.
And then if somebody does ask, well, why'd you show it upside down? I was like, because that's the way the plan sheet shown and we wanted, we wanted to be cohesive.
Okay, that works. All right, so going back to here. Um, so the path to how we got here today, um, talked about that. Moving forward, the purpose of these changes is to ensure that we're aligning with other commercial zoning districts in our town. We want to make sure that we're developing and providing environmental cleanup of this abandoned and unsafe property. And overall, this is going to increase the tax revenue, um, tremendously, as you'll see shortly. Um, this is the slide for the video. I will save us the video watching. Um, on this, Rich, uh, the way that Google Slides does this is that it embeds it and pulls it off of Google Drive. Will the computer have internet at the town hall?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
At the middle school, yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Um, and then, so what are the benefits of these changes? This is obviously after people have seen what the site looks like or the proposed change for the site. Um, this is obviously the slide that we got from G F I. I kind of redid the text just to make it more readable. Um, so projected annual tax revenue of over a million dollars, which will translate easily to, you know, over eleven million dollars over ten years, um. Creating more value for the site itself, um, from five million to over sixty-six million. Nearly quadrupling the total industrial valuation of the town of Norfolk from twenty-two point six million to eighty-nine million. Um, we're looking at about an estimated three hundred thousand dollars in permanent fees of, in permit fees. And estimated annual CPA revenue of over ten thousand dollars. There's going to be new economic development investment in this town, which exceeds fifty-five million dollars after remediation costs. So that's after they've already spent money on cleaning up the site. There's also a potential for an estimated three hundred and fifty new employees at this location, which would strengthen the local economy. Especially with the proximity to, um, local restaurants, the gas station down the street. As well. And so in summary, you know that, yes, there's still work that needs to be done. Planning Board has to do the site plan, review and approvals. There is a deed restriction on this property. It is currently restricted to only allow another hospital on this location. Um, so there's work that needs to be done there, but there's a lot of benefits for this. This is a path towards an environmental cleanup and the demolition of an abandoned site. We're looking at it significantly increased tax revenue for the town, and this is aligning with our new master plan and other commercial zoning districts. Um, so I'm done there. I did this earlier for, um, my wife and her concerns were that we're not really talking about. Uh, um, the changes that we're proposing the, in the text, um, from the warrant. So. I don't know if we have to or should do anything to address that or. You know, I, I'll, I'll state that and I'll look for your thoughts.
That, that's a good one, Chris. Um. One of the things that maybe this could be incorporated into like. A, uh, an additional slide or maybe in the summary is like. You know, what is the, it's like, okay, that's what's happening to the site. Here's what we're asking tonight. Now, we're asking for you to approve the C six zoning changes. And the C six zoning changes are. Are in alignment with some of our other commercial zoning districts. So it's, it's. It is, uh, we looked at our other commercial districts and we applied, um. We applied the appropriate changes to this zone to, to make it commercially feasible. Something like that.
Would you, do you want a slide, maybe summarizing some of the, the changes, you think? Something like, some bullet points or?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense personally. And I can tie it in with that language that I have, like bring the alignment to the zones, um. Allow certain uses that are not currently allowed in that area that are allowed in adjacent zones, um.
And I even think maybe you start, don't, so you never want it, like you never want your final slide to introduce new information.
Right.
I think you start with that. It's like, hey, we're here tonight to talk about the C six zoning changes and here's the, here's, here's the key points of it. How, now, we're asking for that because it, because it is zoned as a hospital right now and we need to change that zoning. And then you can go into all the slides. And then you wrap it up with, again, we're here asking for C six zoning changes to make it a commercial. Zone, which it's not right now. It's a hospital zone. And, and here's, here's the benefits.
So just to, just to clarify though, it, it, it is a commercial zone.
True.
Is this deed restricted at the hospital, you know, hospital related uses?
When is the timing of this presentation? Is it right after the, uh, the motion?
He introduces it, the advisory board does their thing, and then I think it's us.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion will be made second.
This doesn't really discuss what any of the changes are that we're.
No.
Trying to get a.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I wonder if I was just sitting in the audience and not in these meetings every month talking about this, I think I would probably want to know. Um, you know, if this is, not that we have to go through the whole spreadsheet because I don't think anybody really. No. Wants to follow that and it's going to be tiny on the screen and they're not going to be able to go through a whole, you know, handout in five minutes or three minutes. But what if we just said this would mirror the such and such commercial district? And if there's any outliers. That aren't included in that other district, here's what they are, you know, so that it's just, it's exactly the same as, say, the C five or whatever it's closest to. Um, here are the couple of things that would be in addition to that.
Yeah, I, I like that. It's, isn't it, it's very similar to the, the.
The C.
The C five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, C one, C one.
Okay.
C, C one in or out or, well, you know, I'm halfway off, I believe.
So Rich, maybe you can give me a little table that just shows like with checkboxes, like some of that.
Yeah.
I'll give you added access to the slide deck. That way you can just put it in there.
I think you open with that. I think that's the opening, um, to talk about it and. Then, then you talk about the develop, you know, what, you know, what's the history of the site? How did we get here and? And, and then you, and then you finalize with a, a quick summary, just to recap the ask. Here's the ask for tonight.
And I don't think we necessarily need to put this in the slides, but in case there is somebody that's in the audience that's new to town or. Um, hasn't been following the master plan meetings. When we say that this is in line with the master plan, should we maybe, not that you have to put it in the slides, Chris, but just, you know. Keep in mind what those top few things were in case somebody asks, you know, what are the top three things or what are we trying to align with? They just don't remember. I don't know that we need to put it in there, but just to have it in your mind in case somebody asks a question, you know, is this number one, number two, number three? Priority from the townspeople.
Yeah, and feel free if there's anything that you want me to make sure I hit, if that question does ask to yet asked. Um, just shoot me an email or a text and let me know.
Okay.
Kind of minor thing.
We need to talk more about the light industrial uses of what it. The, the likely scenarios are and, and a bullet point at the end of, and what it doesn't include because we call that out specifically.
I would, my, my opinion here is to keep this as concise and short as possible and let those things come through the question and answer period if there is one.
Yep.
Um, yeah, not to say we should shortchange the, the talking points, but I think Chris has covered. At least ninety percent of them. We might just have to edit some of the others and then historically, that's where, so let's put this way. Who's on this? I gotta be, this is recorded, so this is gonna. Doesn't matter how much we answer in the presentation, the question's going to be asked in the question and answer anyway, so let's just let it come up there.
Yeah. Yep, I'm a firm believer of less is more. Um, we've had public hearings on it. We've had a, you know, a lot of planning board meetings on it. It's been discussed in. Um, advisory and with select board. So there's a lot of information that's out there and, and, uh. I, I, yeah, clear and concise, less is more.
And it will be, at town meeting, there will be the, the blue line version will be available for. So that'll be available for residents when they come into the meeting that night to have.
Yeah, I do think I agree with Eric. I think whether it comes up in the, in the Q and A or you proactively say it in just, you know, kind of conversation when you're going through this. I bet there are going to be some folks that think light industrial don't know what it is and then think last mile. Amazon. So I bet it will come up. It's easy to explain, um, that it's not that, but I, I am willing to bet that will come up, whether we mention it. Proactively or wait for the questions.
Yeah, because if we went through every single. Markup and revision, we'd be there all night and that's, that's what the public hearing is for. That's what all the other meetings leading up to this are for. But we just need to be prepared to answer questions as they come up.
Agreed.
And that's specifically that, you know, fulfillment center is not allowed, so.
Right. Correct. And. The, um, you know, the residential uses. Except for, well, the one exception, assisted living are no longer. That's a Q and A thing, right? Same thing if it comes up.
Yep. That's right, it is.
It's not like this, because you get the warrant, the, I mean, the warrant gets mailed to the house, right? So you, you have the document in front of you, right? So.
Right.
Hopefully you. Get a chance to look through, see.
So handout wise, what are we going to have for handouts? Rich, you said you're going to have the blue line markup. Up for the. For a handout.
So the, the blue line markup of the use table and then the changes to the articles.
Right, and then we, we need to get the. Presentation finalized by a certain, Jay wants to see it, right? The.
Yes.
Honitor, he want, did he, did he give a deadline of when he wanted to see it? I mean, obviously not the day before, but. So we need to talk about when, when.
We told him we'd probably have it by next week or something, I think, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, even in this current state, I, I'm fine sharing it with Jay now. Um, we're only adding a slide or two, um. And it's pretty lightweight, so I don't think from a time perspective, he's going to have too many concerns. The only thing he might come back with is, is there a way to shorten the video, um, which I could conceivably do. Um, just by putting some restrictions on what part it's playing, but, um, I'll le, I'll let him say something about that before we actually do it.
Yeah. And then. Rich, we have to. We have to send the, the PowerPoint to somebody ahead of time because the school is going to prep it all, right?
Yeah, I, I will give it to Justin and they, because they're going to bring it over, you know, they'll bring it over to the school to have them load it up when they do the, um. For all the other slides.
Yep, so just have them, have them test the video. Just to make, it does work.
Um, yes, yep.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I was wondering, should we put G F I on a couple of those images? Because they are from their presentation, you think, like somewhere.
Uh, you want to share it again? We, we should. If it, if it's their doc, we should give them credit for it.
So I gave him credit on.
Yeah, the one, the one.
On their slide that says data on the slide provided by G F I, um, let me just share.
Want to share your screen again?
I do. Let's see if technology lets me. I keep hitting cancel. Okay. All right, so this is from Rich. No need to. Do that. Um, this was from a Google search.
Yep, yeah, that's fine.
This is theirs, um, but all the credits. All the credits are on this. This is.
That one there, so.
Yep.
Probably just that one, Chris, I think. Oh, the, and the ninth slide.
The last one, yeah, but the last one is actually from the video. Um, should I credit G F I or should I credit the company that did it?
I, I would probably just put like source G F I Partners. You know, and so, so, yeah, that one just changed source G F I.
All righty.
And Chris, the slides look great. Clean, simple, easy to read.
Appreciate that. That's, uh, definitely what I was going for and I'm really trying to anchor on the bolded words as. What I'm doing from an intent perspective, um, something that G F I had done here with regards to showing the money and the net benefits. Um, so I'm trying to continue that throughout.
I, I think we should, once we get the slides done, I do think we should also just give it to G F I just so they have it, so that they're not seeing it for the first time. Um.
Yes, yep.
I, I don't see that they, I don't think they would have any problems with this, but we should just give it to them just as a courtesy.
Sounds good.
So what's, what's our, what's the timeframe then, Chris, that you're thinking of getting this wrapped up?
Um, so I just need information from Rich for slide number three. On some of the changes for that, and then I can do a final slide ten, um, which I'm billing like a call for action slide.
Okay.
Um, and that's just right after the summary, like now what we need you to do is to vote. For this to allow us to get this vision realized essentially.
And so.
I'll work on a slide tomorrow.
Like you're thinking at the, at the latest, like a week from now? Have it all done?
I'm hoping that we can wrap this up by Friday. I don't want.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be great. That would be, give it to Jay. If we get it wrapped up this week, we can get it to Jay to review. Um. Pass it on.
I'm gonna, I'll do my end, so this will be done this week.
Great.
Perfect.
Awesome.
And everybody does have comment access onto the doc, so if you do come up with anything, um, between now and Friday, just please comment. Select me, um, so that I can see it and, uh, go from there, but.
Yeah, you just, just make sure you send it directly to Chris. We, because it's not a public meeting, we're really not supposed to collaborate. Collaborate outside of public forums, so just send messages directly either to. Chris or Rich or those two, but not all of us.
That's interesting. So we can't collaborate on the dock either?
Well.
Hmm, not really.
Not really.
Well, send it to, send it to, send it to me. I'll send it to Chris.
Yeah, you really, you really, you really should go through Rich on everything. Outside of public forum like this, we really should. So I would just say, look at it, look at it and. Send your comments to Rich. Go get them to Chris.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Now, if you have a question, I mean, if you have a question about something on there, you could always one-on-one have a call with, with Chris, just a call with Chris, one-on-one, but. That's different.
Yes, yep. Yeah, it's kind of. The clunkier parts about that, right?
But it looks good, looks really good, Chris. I like it. I like, I, I want a second one. Melissa said it's clean, it's simple. Uh, gets the message across, should, should do the job very efficiently.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right, so we talked about the handouts for this, finishing up the slides. And then distribute, you know, then we'll distribute them out for comments to, to Jay. We'll send it to G F I. Um, and, and then the rest, and then the rest of the board as well. Just let us know when it's ready. And then we can, then we'll still have another week or so to, uh, make any final adjustments if needed. It's great.
And you are, you will be posted for town meeting, as you know, just a reminder, as a board.
Yeah, you, you're talking about having a meeting beforehand.
Yeah, maybe. Yep, yep.
So that's at six P M?
Yep, I posted you for six o'clock.
Okay, yep. So we're posted for six to meet at six at the middle school, what we'll probably end up meeting in the library then? Like we did last time.
That's usually the meeting place.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will not be there. I will be out of town. Sorry.
The worst.
And the other two, there's really no, the other zoning matters are not really. Rising to a level of need any presentation or anything. There's just.
Don't jinx it, Rich.
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't jinx it. I think it's.
All right.
It, it, so then the, then there's like three articles, so after, if we're done with this, we'll move on. We're done with this, I think, right? So then there's three articles that talk about the, um. Accessory. Um, buildings, right? Accessory buildings and so forth. Uh, there are three separate articles. They are gonna get. It would, I think it would be good, I think Jay had recommended that. Uh, Chris gets up and just says, yeah, all these three articles are, are, are all to address accessory buildings. Um. And, you know, it's as, as printed in the warrant, you know, the revisions. If you have any questions, let me, let me know.
Yeah, do you think I need to be forthright by stating that this is not to address the A D U? Change that was made earlier this year, that we will be dealing with that in the spring town hall, town meeting?
I think it's not a bad idea.
I don't know if that muddies it or not, like I, I know that there's going to be questions about it because people are going to be confused, like, oh, hey, accessory buildings, does this?
Yeah.
Has to do with, you know, the governor's change?
I, I would, I would, I would address it just to head it off, that this does not, not address it and we have time to address those at the spring town meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, or even just that accessory buildings are not the same as accessory dwelling units. You cannot live in accessory building and just maybe keep it at that unless there's questions, just to simplify it.
Okay, I have a feeling I'm going to be up there for a long time.
Well, it's better to have all the stuff prepared and not need it, but I, I think. Go up with a very simple statement like we talked about and you'll be fine with those three. And I think it's just, you get up once and talk about it and then we'll just, I think what it'll happen is we'll just vote on each one sequentially then. And then. The, then it's story, half-story. Um.
That's gonna be contentious.
If you want to get up, Chris, and, and, and just say, it's just to, just to provide definition that wasn't there for what, in the, in the zoning guidelines, and that's it. Could be as simple as that.
Yeah, and it, and it, it literally came up from, uh. You know, from the situation where somebody was. What would it be building a three-story house and our, our zoning is for two and a half stories? And they actually. Nothing matters to tell me necessarily, but they changed their house design to, to meet this definition, so.
I think you just keep that in your back pocket if someone asks.
Yeah, 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 I'm not, yeah, I'm not, less is more.
I think it's just all about. We are providing definition that wasn't currently in the zoning and. I think it's just all about, we are providing definition that wasn't currently in the zoning and.
Okay.
Um, I think that's it for planning board articles. Uh, how many was on the warrant, Rich? Like, was there only like twelve, thirteen, eleven?
Total article?
The total warrant, it's not a big warrant. It's not big, yeah.
No, I think, yeah, maybe fifteen or something more. Yeah.
Could be worse, Chris. You could be, what were we last time? Number twenty-seven out of twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Well, I think the one positive thing, Chris, is that you, the, the C six is article five. Then you can sit and rest a while, because then the school articles after. And then we'll come back to, to the other zoning articles.
And the school's got a community forum next week, I saw. For Freeman Kennedy. So if, just sure you all are aware of it that go to Freeman Kennedy, but my kids don't. So I will, that's in person only, right? That community forum?
I believe so. So they usually do have the video recordings after the fact, but they don't, they aren't always able to live.
I'll, I'll, I'll be in town, so I'll go. Alright. Um. Just a little plug for the school district there, the community forum next Wednesday, seven P M at Freeman Kennedy. What else? Uh, so anything else on? To prep, prep for town meeting? Think we're, I think we're right. Chris, appreciate you putting the slides together. Look great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, thank you. I had a, a good couple of models to follow. That side presentation was, uh, chef's kiss.
What's that, Rich?
I said, there you go.
Yeah. Alright, so next, uh, next item on our agenda is to, uh, Gary Searle, our new associate, uh. Planning Board member. He's not our new yet, but, um, so Gary Searle was a previous planning board member, wants to get back in as an associate. And, and contribute, uh, submitted his application and. Uh, so we are here tonight to, um, to decide whether we want to appoint him or not. Anything I missed, Rich, on that? I mean, we need to vote.
Well, you do need to vote and also, uh, the select board will need to vote on it as well, so.
So we, we vote and then, uh, then the recommendation goes to select, correct? And then. So any discussion? Okay. Well, then I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Gary, uh, Searle as our planning board associate member.
So moved.
Do I have a second from anyone?
Second.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote. Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Melissa?
Hi.
Carrie?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Alright, that's unanimous. Alright, any other updates, Rich?
Uh, no, not really. Just, uh, stay safe tomorrow, trick or treating and, uh.
Two days.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, sorry, I'm the head. My apologies. Yeah, don't go tomorrow night.
I think I freaked out my neighbors.
Jeez, uh, so much for that. No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, and then, uh, Betsy's got the schedule posted in the agenda for upcoming meetings. Take a look at it. It's, you know, typically the second Tuesday. Take a look at it and, um. Um, that was not, yeah, and we will see if there's any conflicts and adjust. We'll talk about it at our next meeting.
Yep, just a reminder, our next meeting is on Monday, the eighteenth.
Thank you.
And Betsy, I know I owe you some signatures. I, I have time to come in tomorrow. Great, I'll see you then, Melissa. Alright, thanks for the reminder.
You're welcome.
Hey, Betsy, does anybody else owe any signatures to?
No, no.
Okay.
We're good. We're all, we'll be caught up tomorrow once I see Melissa.
Awesome.
You have a pretty busy agenda on the eighteenth.
Do we?
Mm-hmm.
More so than usual?
Not hearing wise, but topic wise.
Okay.
We'll be talking about the next, you know, master plan, next step, so I'm sure there'll be. Generally. It's a good discussion and it's not, but I mean, that's, that's, that'll be on there.
Okay, yeah. The only hearing we ha, we have is that two sixty-two Dedham Street, their, their, um, site plan. They came back with a revised site plan for that Brookside shooting, um, sports, so. That was the hearing.
And then, Rich, since, since we appointed Gary Searle, when will select? Vote on that? Will he, my, my question is, I guess my ultimate question is, will he be at our November eleventh, eight, November eighteenth meeting?
I think so.
Okay. And Betsy, you'll, you'll loop him in?
Yeah, I'll loop him in. I'll make sure he gets sworn in and then, um, and, you know, include him in any, everything, all of our correspondence.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think they're. Yeah, I think they have a meeting the first week in November. The select board.
Next week.
Yeah, the, the, I saw on the schedule, it's on the sixth, but I wasn't sure if that was in conjunction with the Freeman Kennedy forum. I don't know.
Yeah, because normally don't they meet on a Tuesday, which would be voting day? Right?
Yeah, so I think they're meeting the day after.
Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, well, yep, sounds good. Um, well, hopefully, hopefully select does meet, can approve him. And then we can get him looped in so he can be at our first meeting in November, which is the eighteen.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Great.
Any other new business?
No.
Alright. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good one, everyone.
Hi guys, thank you.